Don't forget your microphones.
Present.
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 Dennis Johnson.
Present.
Emily Pearson.
Present.
We have quorum with all members present, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or revisions to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved Dennis Johnson.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda? Alright, has everybody had a chance to look over the prior minutes? We have town council staff meeting minutes from October sixteenth and then town council meeting minutes from October twenty first.
I sent an adjustment to Rhonda of the staff meeting minutes.
Okay.
I made that adjustment.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff meeting minutes for October sixteenth and the town council meeting minutes, October twenty first with the adjustments made for the staff meeting minutes.
Motion second, Dennis Johnson.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go there. Moving on to the approval of the claims. Has everybody had a chance to look over the claims? Council's payable. I've already got my questions answered, so if anybody else has anything? If not, I will entertain a motion to pay the claims as presented.
So moved Dennis Johnson.
Second, Emily Pearson.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Paid bills. Moving on to council committee reports. EDC, there is no update. Uh, Mr. Freeman?
Yes, for the meeting council, we had two meetings with the Parks Department Director and we voted and approved financially backed drainage issues that have been occurring for drainage park.
Awesome.
And we TPI'd this award contract and uh, we started that maybe before the end of the year or certainly this spring.
Awesome. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Moving on, legal council report. Mr. Colt?
Nothing at this time. Making this too easy.
Hang on.
Uh-oh.
Hang on, I have stuff for Mr. Colt. Fire department not reverting fund limits.
Yes.
When can we expect them?
My plan was to present that in, at our next meeting. I was out of the office last week and so.
That's why I was just looking for a date.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then, legal fees, it's not the end, but it's under legal council. I mean, we've spent a significant amount. We just need to pay attention what we're, what we're doing for all of us to make sure.
It's actually gotten better.
Still a significant amount.
Right.
Okay, I'm good.
Good to go. Alright, moving along. Cicero Jackson Township Plan Commission Report. Mr. Zawinski?
Good evening, council. I have here in front of me the latest version of the director's report. This is for October of twenty twenty five. Firmly revenue for the month of October twenty twenty five is seven thousand six hundred forty seven dollars. Brings us up to a year to date at forty eight thousand eight hundred seventy two dollars. At the same time, last year, October of twenty twenty four, we were at six thousand nine hundred seventy six for the month and fifty three thousand three hundred seventy for the year. That's the difference between the month of October, a plus six seventy one and a minus for the year of four thousand four hundred ninety seven dollars. We issued a total of twenty seven building permits for October of twenty twenty five. Sixteen were within the corporate limits. There were no new homes. We issued another eleven out in Jackson Township. No new homes there either. Estimated cost of these projects permitted was one million one hundred thousand, hundred two thousand nine hundred eighty six dollars. Plan commission meeting scheduled for November twelfth, seven P M. Here at the town hall. There are items on the agenda and we will meet. The BZA meeting is scheduled for November twenty first, seven P M. At the town hall here and there are items on the agenda and we do intend to meet.
Frank, as far as that plan commission agenda goes, just to clarify, it's no new housing, right?
It's what?
No new housing.
No new housing.
Okay. Just making sure.
That's my report. Any questions for me?
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Strong, do you have anything to add?
No, sir. Thank you.
Town engineer report, Mr. Bryant.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you. Good evening.
Um, going through the agenda here. The wastewater project, uh, we had an onsite meeting today. Everything's going really well. Reynolds has, uh, they've emptied the, the digester's empty. They're working on demolition there so they can do the rehab to the digester. Uh, they have transferred flows from the old process into the new ditch clarifiers, new headworks, new bar screens up and running. So a lot of the new equipment's up and running. Uh, Merrill Brothers is working on de-watering and cleaning the existing ditch and then next week they're gonna, Reynolds is gonna start rehab on the existing ditch and clarifiers and moving ahead with that process, so. So everything's moving on pretty well. Got past a lot of, uh, major milestones on that.
And we need to approve pay application sixteen tonight, right?
Correct. We would recommend that.
You want to go ahead and get that out of the way?
Yep.
Alright, we've got pay application sixteen. The amount is seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. Thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Of that is retainage with the remainder being to Reynolds Construction.
Hold wait, that was a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve and the amount presented. Do you have a second?
I'll second. Dennis Johnson.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Get them paid.
So did we ever get, um, with that same project, did we ever get resolution of the damages for the delayed press? Was that unresolved?
Yes, so what they done is, uh, they held off and we actually did use the press to, um, empty the digester. We still have expense for painting the digester, but we didn't do that.
I thought we were going after requests though because we had to do extra.
Yes, we had, we had talked about, um, the liquidated damages that the press company was paying.
That was, that was initially when, I bet, correct me if I'm wrong here, we were talking about it if, if we had to haul out liquid sludge, which was gonna be really expensive. I think it's lesser of an issue now because the press was delivered, installed and got operational. We did not have to haul out the liquid sludge out of the digester. We always had to clean the grid out of the body. That was always, always a given, so.
But then, that was what you're, you're correct. That was the argument is that if they didn't have the press here, we had to pay, Cicero had to pay to have it haul, then that's what was pushing the liquidate damages.
Which was gonna be somewhere around fifty thousand dollars, since we didn't have to do that.
Right, so we actually did use a new press to clean the digester.
Okay.
So if you look at Reynolds Pay App, what they've done, they have, they have assessed liquidated damages because they had an agreement with the Schwing for that, but they've put it in basically for, for project costs, so.
Yeah, so that's not right. But, has it affected us, right?
Well, in fact, I mean, it affected the project because it delayed things, so there's costs associated with the project. So their logic is that, you know, that, you know, it's a bot project and that's costs that they're applying that to. That's their logic. I mean, I, I can understand both sides of it for sure because I don't think we had additional costs related to hauling sludge that we all weren't already gonna have to have.
That was the problem I had is that we had to pay, have haul liquid, the liquid out of there, but I felt we needed to liquidate the damages. But since, you know, they were able to let us use our screw presses and we used, I guess.
Alright, if you're good, I'm good.
Theoretically, you know, if that liquidate damages is applied, no reason we got, they got that liquidate damages is because they, they chose to put it in the agreement to, with Schwing. I mean, they didn't have to do that, but they did. So theoretically though, they're covering costs that we would have to cover in the bot agreement anyway with it, so, you know. In theory, it would cost us an extra fifty-nine thousand dollars if they didn't apply that by the end of the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. West Jackson Street, they've got the sod in, um, they've been working on the striping. They got the majority of the striping done. They kind of missed, we kind of, we extended the pavement, uh, and the concrete work on North Byron Street and on South Byron Street. So we wound up taking out a few parking spots, so we coordinated with them today. They need to come back in and get a couple parking spots striped. But beyond that, they've got the striping basically finished. Uh, sod done as mentioned. Um, I did get confirmation today that they have ordered new globes for the lights. They just aren't sure when they're gonna come in, so they're, I asked them to try to, try to check on the schedule on the delivery.
So is the globe and that diffuser too?
I'm still trying to get an answer on that, yeah. I don't have an answer to that. I've asked, but I don't, I did not get an answer.
And you said sod is in, or?
Yeah, sod was installed last Thursday, Friday.
Oh, was? Okay, I guess I haven't paid attention.
Yeah. It's green out there now.
Yeah.
Is it? Okay.
They still have hydrant reflectors to put in. They've got a few other miscellaneous things that we're trying to get scheduled from them, uh, to get wrapped up, but.
And then you said they are painting the handicap?
They painted those today.
Are they good?
Yeah.
Alright.
Do we have a plan to water the sod or anything to make sure it takes?
They have in their requirement to water it for the extended, there's a, there's an end dot spec, if you will, for sod.
Okay.
At this time of year, they have to water for a certain period of time.
Okay.
If it doesn't rain, so it is in their contract to do that. And then, of course, it's warranted for a year or two, so if it's.
Oh, is it?
If it's brown in the spring, they'll have to replace it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
There is a payout number seven that we, we had submitted on that, is that, and I don't know if that's in there.
It's not included in the claims. I know we talked about holding on to some retainage and I just got busy and didn't follow up with, if you wanted to hold it and not hold it, but I did not bring it in my home. Do you have it?
I do have one copy. I can pass it around, but we had sent that up with recommendation for payment. They're eighty-four percent complete and, and we would recommend a payment of that.
I'll, I'll make a motion to pay, to pay application.
What's the amount, Rh- oh, you have it?
Seven.
Three hundred and five thousand seventy-two dollars of that.
Yeah.
The grant covers one eighty-seven, five eighteen thirty-one and a town twenty-five percent eligible items plus a hundred percent ineligible items of one seventeen, five fifty-three, sixty-nine.
I'll second Dennis Johnson.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's give them paid.
The only other thing with that project, Eric, I didn't know if you wanted to discuss the rail right here in the northeast corner.
I have just two things over there. One is the rail.
Okay. The re-
Go ahead, please.
The rail on the northeast corner, about five days after it's installed, somebody apparently, when, we don't know when or who, drove, drove over the A D ramp and through it and, and hit it and damaged the rail and, and the Parks Department, I believe, took about that, there's low four foot section that was damaged on that corner. Um, we could decide to not put it back in. You might want to take a look at it and see if you think it's really needed. Don't know if anybody's gonna drive over the curb in the A D ramp. Luckily, there's nobody on the A D ramp because they would've hit them. Uh, but we did get a quote from, uh, the installer and provider of that rail to replace it if we wanted to replace that section. And it's about fourteen hundred and fourteen dollars to replace it, including installation. The installation was about two hundred and fifty dollars, so we, we could also get it and pay for the materials and install it ourselves. But first question is, do we want to put it back? Obviously, it was hit once. Is somebody gonna do it again is the question.
Man, it looked like, there were marks on, like they were making a right turn.
I, I have no idea. I don't know if they came from the bar. I have no idea how, why they would've done it. I wouldn't think it would happen again, but, you know, who knows?
I would say we try it again and then make.
Try it one more time.
An assessment. Put a big concrete pole in front of it.
Yeah, that's, that was actually, has been conversation. Do we want to do the install ourselves, or?
Mr. Hunter? Do your guys want to do the install? I, I'm assuming you took it out?
Yeah, we took it out. We, we can, we can put a new second back in.
Thank you.
As a save two hundred and fifty bucks.
Do you have that in your budget to replace that fence?
Absolutely not. Just the install. I spoke to Mrs. Gary and we, we do have funds for that, so.
Thank you, Dan. And thank you, Mr. Hunter and your team. So do you guys want to replace it? I think we should, myself.
I would like to.
Then there's another topic about ballards between the fence and the, or at the power box in the fence?
Yeah, that's what I was talking.
Sure, but, uh, Mr. Bryant, speaking on that, that's what a general conversation we've been having in regards.
I did get feedback that typically you don't want to put those into asphalt.
The other option that potentially there that we might do, this was just a recon conversation I had earlier, in regards that we could move that parking space, strike that area off and see how that would work. Because right now, we have a social parking stop that goes clear back up to the fence, so we could strike that area off and make it a singular parking spot there.
And then make the curb works. If you do that, a parking curb like you guys talked about works then?
Or we could do that.
One of the precast curbs.
One of the concrete stuff, yeah.
If you put holes in, you could drill through the asphalt and bury them. It can, it can be done. You wouldn't want to anchor to the asphalt, but you would drill, you could drill a hole through it, draw a hole in there.
I did notice, that's what they did out in front of the air conditioning unit out here.
So we are working on, I know that, uh, superintendent, partner and, uh, Cooper was, uh, working on some of the adages for a lot of fire climbers, so we were getting a price on what it would cost to put a couple there. So we'll have some, uh, cost on that. But then the other thing is superintendent Hunter does have curb stop that we can put there and possibly place it about three feet from that curb and then that would keep vehicles, we warn them that they're backing up and hitting that with their tires. And so that would be probably the least expensive. We could start with, with the council to be on board with doing that.
Okay. Think we should get those in as soon as possible.
Do you, do you think you want to put the, the poles in? Do you think you'd want to put those in? Do you have a?
If that part, so there's only enough space for one parking space there, correct?
Yes.
So you could move it north and put the curb in and mark that back section off.
Correct.
Or mark it as golf cart parking.
Terry, I was gonna say that, but I didn't want to speak up.
So that would be another option.
Okay.
And if you want, if you want to put poles, I told Terry this is, because he mentioned it to me, I'm, I'm getting a price from Midwest Paving to put poles in, if we want to put them in. And we'd probably have grant funds that we could apply to and cover seventy-five percent of it, still working, probably have underruns that we could probably get that pulled off. And put them, so we'd put them at the hyd- there's a hydrant at Washington Street. We want to put a couple holes on. And we could put a couple down here, assuming their price is reasonable and we wanted to go that route.
I've been told they're like two hundred, two fifty a piece. Is that about right?
I, yeah, it could, it could be anywhere from two fifty to a thousand a piece. I've seen ranges all over the place, but.
So I think, I, to, to me, it makes, I think we need to go kind of measure that out and maybe put a curb stop in and maybe, I, I don't know how far north you can slide that spot.
Have to look and see where it hits the alley, but yeah, see if you can turn, okay. I know right now we ended at about four feet already. We ended the, the bump out about four feet south of the walkway, so we got four feet, three or four feet there already that, from where the old parking line was.
Okay.
Because we wanted to make sure that if somebody parked there, they had room to pull out, because if you just bumped it right up to that, they would just be driving over the curb, so.
Right.
Major, the major concern is wanting to try to pack something, or we'd see a tour if you try to smack him.
For deliveries and such.
Handicap on, then real close to the fence and I got the, the team thinking about, uh, we're probably need to do something, or swing it, that electrical box.
Mike, thank you for bringing that up.
That electrical box doesn't have a con, a pole already?
No.
Yeah.
That's kind of the reason, this kind of thing about putting ballards there, put them up high enough where, you know, you're not killing any parking area, but it gives them something to hit, people before they hit that little fence, the electrical box.
How soon can we get curb stops there, Jim?
I can put one in tomorrow.
I think we need to look at it before we go hammer nails in there, though.
But you, you could put it in and not anchor it as a temporary measure, maybe what Dennis is getting at.
Yeah, that's all I meant, just to get something.
Before somebody, is it why you're, why you're considering other? At least if they bumped into it, even if it slid, then hopefully they would, no one would stop, but.
So if the council's okay with putting the curb stop in and it takes some, you know, minutes and try from other plane?
Not anchor it though, correct? It would just be floating as much as a curb stop floats, okay?
Well, they're concrete, so it'll be a decent one. Is it, yeah, it'll be a, it might slide a little bit, not much.
You guys good?
I'm good.
You're good.
Well, those bump outs have been horrible.
Whose idea was that?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna, I was going to say something, but I hit my tongue.
Not if I didn't think the policy.
Alright, um, moving along. Uh, before you go any farther, Keith, just to remind anybody, as we approach the end of the, uh, agenda, if anybody plans on talking and comments by citizens, can you please fill out a blue slip? Alright. Twenty twenty-five community crossings matching grant.
The contractor has been in. They've done all the paving on Morse Landing and Catherine and Flanagan. Uh, if anybody, everybody's had a chance to look at it, we actually.
Haven't seen Catherine Flanagan. Morse Landing looks really good.
Catherine Flanagan looks well too, good too. And, yeah, they've got it all seeded, stralled on the side yards and everything here on the side, so I guess at some point you have to decide whether you want to keep that a one-way street or not.
We've already been talking about that.
We put the signs back up, but until.
I think for now, we're just gonna keep it the same as, as ever.
I think we should change it, but.
You think what?
I think we should change it back, but.
Yeah, we can have that discussion.
Yeah.
We don't have to have it now, I mean.
Okay.
I don't know what the intent was when you all, because we definitely widened it, right?
Yeah, part of it is it being used as a cut through.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to avoid the, uh, intersection. It was creating a bunch more traffic and when the road was too narrow, it was creating a bunch of problems, so.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, do you want to have that discussion now, or do you want to just go?
We can wait, huh?
I'm of the opinion, leave it for a while, but that's just my opinion. Alright, if not, alright, that's fine. We can leave, leave it alone for now.
So we did get a pay application from them. We're processing it and we did, uh, walk through last Friday and did a inspection or punch list on that as well, so they got a few things that come out and addressed. But all in all, it's basic, it's basically done, just a couple minor things.
So that pay application, we don't need to do anything with tonight?
No, we have not forwarded it yet because we have, we've sent it back to them with questions and comments and changes, so hopefully it'll be ready before the next council meeting.
Alright, sounds good.
Item four, Morse Landing Dry Project, that's the underdrain project with the stormwater pour, but as Bruce mentioned last time, we're, we're looking to advertise that in December and receive bids in the middle of January for that, for spring starts and still on schedule for that. Any other questions for me?
No, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Hey, Dan, before we move on, do you have anything under special projects?
Yes, sir. The only thing I would have would be the, uh, application for the, uh, twenty twenty-six cycle for the community crossing matching grant for East Jackson Street, so, uh, with, uh, Mrs. Gary's help, uh, Mr. Cooper's and Mr. Bryant's, we, uh, did get that application submitted before the deadline of October thirty-first and, uh, hopefully we'll hear back, uh, sometime in December and, uh, keep our fingers crossed that we get that, uh, eighty-twenty grant so we can, uh, redo East Jackson Street with the paving project.
Awesome.
Thank you guys for looking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Something I would have. Thank you. Any questions for me?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, moving along to old business. Mr. Hunter? Is this your show here? Grant writer?
Um, yeah, the only I have tonight to follow up and, uh, get council approval to have you sign the agreement with the same, with the grant writer.
Aaron, have you reviewed it already?
Yes.
Make the motion to, uh, have Joe sign the agreement.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We'll get it signed tonight. Thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you. We have a meeting on Friday, day and night, to get started with her Friday morning.
Awesome, looking forward to it. Alright, moving along, new business. Stormwater update ordinance number eleven dash zero five dash two zero two five dash zero one. Mr. Zawinski, this is you, correct?
Uh, yes, sir. I then changed a bunch of standards, uh, one of them being H E A ten thirty-seven, uh, as a requirement of our audit that we had in April, we were required to update our ordinance. Uh, this ordinance came from the LTAP program from Purdue University that has items blessing. Uh, we put our own touches on it, sent it off to Mr. Colt. He's, uh, made his changes and approves it and we asked the council to approve this tonight.
Anything substantive, Mr. Zawinski, that changes the way we used to do things before this?
Well, one thing, not really. It actually relaxes the standard a little bit. We just have to be I D A standards instead of county level standards, so we have one set of standards to be, that's, that's probably the biggest, uh, change. There's a lot of technical stuff in there about testing and things like that. Um, it's kind of above my head, frankly, so, uh, but it's what the other municipalities are approving.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number eleven dash zero five dash two zero five, two zero two five dash zero one.
So moved, Emily Pearson.
Second.
We have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good to go. We have nothing under miscellaneous, um.
Hang on. Um, just as a council, we need to keep the potential of a C C and G grant of Jackson and Main Street in front of us. So, I mean, if we're gonna, we need to consider where that falls on the priority list and that grant is in July, so we can't wait until the last minute to work that if we want to do something there. So I think first we have to figure out priorities. Second is, um.
Eric, to that effect, I'd also mention that they changed, uh, we have less time than the time we're awarded. It's a time you have to sign a construction contract, so we could never pull off this Jackson Street project hundred to, hundred to days guideline. There's just too much of the time and work to get that done. But it's something that we, like you said, we have to work ahead if we're gonna do that. That project down there might, might fall into that too, because they reduced it from a hundred and twenty days to ninety days, which.
Okay.
Nearly impossible to something else to think about.
Nearly impossible to something else. I'd like about moving ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we need to figure out if it's something, where it fits in our priority and if it's something we have to apply for. Um, I don't know if you guys got an opioid settlement email as well?
I, I've signed that thing three times and they keep sending it back to me.
Well, so, so I got a settlement from the state, the town did. I got that email and one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-two cents of unrestricted share.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, I don't know if you guys got that or not?
Yeah. Well, the, what I'm talking about is a new distribution, correct? You, you been getting that?
Not lately. I haven't gotten it. I don't have one distribution.
Well, so, I, I signed it three times and sent it in, then they keep sending me the email and then they sent out that something was an error and that, I, I don't know.
I don't know if you have to, because we have a restricted and an unrestricted fund for opioid distribution.
Restricted with zero.
Yeah, so I don't know if you're signing for each of those and then one of them, I don't know.
Okay.
And then lastly, um, chief, the, can, can you send out monthly the fire runs to the council, please?
Sure.
And from the I S O perspective? Thank you. I'm good with miscellaneous.
Oh, that was miscellaneous, okay. All right, so we're done with the miscellaneous. Um, I have no blue slips, so I assume there's no comments by citizens. Okay, um, if not, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Dennis Johnson.
Second, Emily Pearson.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank, thank you all.